I will close meeting door to the Argus Town Council. Break your session May 17, 2016. Roll call. Joe Suzanne Unval, Randy Steen, George Knoll, President. Julie Stoff, our way with family and Dustin Johnson had a death in the family, so he will be here tonight. Joe Attorney Derek Jones and Lieutenant Lisa Mulaney. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes of 5:30, 2017. Minutes of 16. Yeah. On the agenda, minutes 16.
All the things we are here.
Cut and paste, cut and paste.
That's it.
Any additions, corrections, questions?
I move to accept the minutes from May 3, 2017 meeting.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Then all five saying aye. Aye, aye. Oppose, same. Motion carries three, zero. Citizens input. Hi Jan.
Hi George. Well, I have some questions about its improprieties on our history, but Corus assures me that it's being addressed. The gentleman across the street from me, Paul, here, my next door neighbor with the stuff from his fire still sitting in his yard.
Should be on the report that I sent you again. It's a big pile too.
Are you?
It's a big pile too.
Oh, there's two of them, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Geez, now, okay. Anyone else have any citizens input? I'm going to move on to the end of presentation. Introduce yourself again.
Have some light reading material for you. For you. Thank you. And even better, a video because sure you don't want to sit and talk on that.
Right. Corey White.
Before I push play really quick, again, my name is Brian Brachmire. I'm the Director of Marketing and Economic Development for the Indiana Municipal Power Agency. Want to thank all of you for giving me a few minutes of your meeting. I understand it's ahead of schedule, but this is something we are doing with all of our member communities this year. It's been a while since we've been able to get out and meet the councilors, so we thought we could put together a little bit of video just to kind of describe who we are, what we do, and how we like to work with our member communities. So, this is just a quick five minute video. I will go ahead and collect and answer any questions you may or may not have.
Hello, I am Rajal, President and CEO of Indiana Municipal Power Agency. Thank you for allowing IMPA to take this moment to introduce ourselves. IMPA is your community's wholesale power provider. This means we generate and purchase power which we then sell to your community. Your utility in turn distributes that power to open homes and businesses. IMPA was founded in 1983 by 11 municipal owned electric utilities just like yours. Since then, IMPA has grown to serve 61 member communities in both Indiana and Ohio. Our core business consists of providing our members with a low cost, reliable, and remarkably responsible power supply through a diverse power portfolio. For some of you, this may be new information, but others, it is a reminder of the long history and partnership that the Indiana Municipal Power Agency and your community share.
The Indiana Municipal Power Agency was created as a political subdivision of the state of Indiana by the General Assembly in 1980. As a not-for-profit joint action agency, IMPA does not make dividends to shareholders and has access to tax exempt financing. The goal of the agency has always been to provide low cost, reliable, and environmentally responsible power to municipally owned electric utilities across Indiana. IMPA's electric rates are among the lowest in the state, and we expect to continue to have some of the lowest rates for many years to come. We began to provide power to 24 Indiana municipal utilities in 1983. As of today, IMPA serves 60 Indiana communities and one in Ohio. That's a total customer population of approximately 340,000. IMPA is a financially strong company with annual revenues of approximately $460 million and total assets of approximately $1.7 billion. IMPA provides power to our members on a total requirements basis, which means we provide all of the power to your community. If your utility was to add or lose a large electric customer, it's up to IMPA to adjust the power provided to your community. In this way, IMPA takes the risk of any changes in your power supply needs. In order to provide for our members' power needs, IMPA has invested in power resources to meet that need. IMPA wholly or jointly owns 15 power resources that are comprised of 21 units. IMPA's total power load is 1,300 megawatts. What isn't generated by IMPA own generation, about 14%, is purchased in the market. The IMPA Market Operations Center is checking our members' power needs and finds the lowest prices in the market every 15 minutes of every hour, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. To continue IMPA's promise to provide an environmentally responsible power supply, as well as to keep future rates stable, IMPA has begun constructing solar power generating facilities in as many of our member communities as possible. So far, we have installed just over 24 megawatts in 13 solar parks across the state. Our goal is to continue to add at least 10 megawatts a year. While our core business is to provide electricity that keeps your lights on, over the years, IMPA has added additional services and resources to strengthen and support our members' local communities. This includes the IMPA Service Corps, which provides cost-effective system engineering, design construction, maintenance, and member cost of service studies, as well as rate design services. IMPA further supports its members with government relations, economic development, marketing and communications assistance, as well as energy efficiency and green power programs as part of its member services division. Argus became a town in 1832 on land purchased from the Potawatomi. It was first known by the name of Sidney. Argus joined IMPA in 2008 and has a peak load of 5 megawatts. IMPA is governed by its members, and each member community has a seat on the IMPA Board. Your IMPA Commissioner is Electric Utility Assistant Superintendent Jamie Lindstrom. IMPA's long-term focus enables the Indiana Municipal Power Agency to provide low cost, reliable, and environmentally responsible power supply to its members. Our experienced and dedicated team is here to help you succeed.
We are proud to be a wholesale power provider, and we do want to help your community in every way that we can. We look forward to strengthening our relationship and serving you for years to come. Thank you.
Sorry with the IMPA overlap because of...
Lights.
I think we counted that...
Sorry, Corey, light.
I think we say IMPA about 216 times during that video. You up there? There are all those reasons. One thing that wasn't mentioned in the video that wanted to bring up is the board recently approved an economic dollar rider. That is basically a discount on the wholesale portion of the bill for all of our member communities. And talking with Jamie and Jim, I believe that's been approached to the board right now, or has it been approached? Was it the last meeting that it was approved? But this is something that is competitive with all the other utilities, the wholesale power providers that they have that are out there in the region. And it's a five-year discount. So, the first year, that would be a 20% discount. The second year would be a 15% discount. The third and the fourth would be a 10% discount. The fifth year would be a 5% discount. And many other utilities have many criteria in order to meet that, but we just have two. A company must have a new load of 1 megawatt, and also must invest a million dollars or two. So, we think it's pretty competitive and glad that the town has that and our economic development toolbox. But I understand that was a lot of information, all there in six minutes, but happy to answer any questions you may have.
Jericho. What do you got for a meeting? Jerry, how about you? Yeah, any questions for me?
Oh, wait. Don't wait. If I have questions, then wait.
And Jerry, you're very smart.
Speed up.
Yeah. Also, I want to actually thank Jerry for his involvement in IMPA too, being a good partner. On my side, on the economic development marketing side, want to have good leados in there too, because they really are the best soldiers that really help drive home projects too. And I understand it's been working closely with the town, so thank you for your partnership too.
I believe we owe the thanks too, with Jerry, like you said, partners on our video. So, we partners with our video, so appreciate that.
We can say inputs many times.
He can say it, didn't he?
Well, thank you all for your time. If you ever have any questions about who may or will be due, please don't hesitate to contact me and happy to come up whenever you can.
Attorney report.
Oh, that's...
That's Ben Collie.
Yeah, it's Ben Morris. I still don't have any report from Chuck to Whitgett on 405 South Michigan Street, so I sent an email today just to kind of remind her that, hey, we're waiting to get that so we can take some action, try to get that building taken care of. The other issue is, and I don't know if this is in your packets or not, hopefully it is, site development plan application, do you have that from the back? There's a change. This was approved originally back on the meeting in April 19. Taking another look at that, there's a paragraph here, this is what was approved, that I've circled this paragraph, you won't see it now, and we don't want to see it now. It made some reference to some things that were kind of conflicting with the language that we had in our land use and development code. So, we rerun that, got rid of that paragraph. And if anybody wants to take a look at this paragraph, you're welcome to do that, just to see what needs to get out of there. But it talks about the application would be necessary for mineral extraction or change of use. That's not necessarily the case. Our land use development code talks really about, in certain zoning areas, B1, B2, L1, light industrial and heavy industrial, that this is required for new construction or construction that exceeds 10% of the floor area, or could be a change of use. But we're just trying to be consistent with our land use and development code, so that's why that's different than what we approved basically a month ago. But we would like your approval of that, so that Lisa can have that updated form.
No motion to change?
I make a motion to accept the new site development plan application with all changes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the new site plan checklist with revisions. Any discussion? All papers, opposed, aye. Aye, aye. Oppose, same, sign. Fast, three, zero.
Okay. Another update on our manufacturing center shell building. Talking with Jerry, I think the lease is...
No shell, manufacturing center.
No, manufacturing center, yes. Manufacturing center, the lease regarding the manufacturing center, I think is good. We reached terms on that. We can't sign the lease until we have details of the financing and the legal description of that.
Clarification on that, I thought our attorney had looked it over. He didn't, so I did, so I'll get back with the group on some things that we need to correct. Primarily because of the RDA, and I probably wouldn't get it right now, but for some things that I'm expecting to propose in terms of changes, I will know probably by tomorrow or the next day, some of this is going to be with regards to what the lender is going to be requiring.
There you have it. We're looking at running into the end of the month, you know, we don't have another regularly scheduled meeting until June, I think maybe 1/7. So, we're probably going to be looking at having to hold a special meeting. I'm not going to be here on the 31st at all. The 30th is another the Plan Commission meeting, that's a Tuesday evening. And I don't know that we specifically have to set the date right now as we sit here, but a lot of that's also going to depend on when we get a survey and when we get letters of commitment from the bank about financing, see the details on that. So, we're running down to the wire, but it's a work in progress. We're going to have to, we're going to have to get it done. And I'm, you tell me, but is June 2nd too late?
No. We're having an exact session of meeting Monday, it's coming Monday.
Yeah, you're not going to make, and you're not going to have the information, I don't believe, by then in any way.
I have a clear picture when I hear feedback either Friday or Monday from the bank.
What is the actual deadline, Jerry? Could we conduct that at the next meeting in June? I think that would be June 7th.
You know, with regards to all the paperwork that needs to be submitted, I think the RDA will be comfortable with understanding that it's still work in progress with finalizing some things, provided that I can get the letter from the bank. And I anticipate probably, as I said, I'll know very shortly what the decision is from the law committee. And it doesn't make any difference, right now, if we, financing doesn't come in place and the lease and everything else goes by the wayside. So, my focus for the last week and a half has been with banks.
I'm just curious to know, do we need, is it June 7th our next regularly scheduled meeting? Is that acceptable to have the lease signed if things are lined up otherwise?
I think the RDA will be comfortable with, we are negotiating the lease with the understanding that their primary concern is going to be the financing. So, if we pay attention to financing, get something, even a term sheet from the bank, I think we are, we're covered in terms of our documentation.
Well, I guess I'm hearing then, we don't need to necessarily schedule a special meeting. We can conduct things on June 7th.
Can I get back to you after and what the bank is doing?
And a survey.
The survey is, will be part of that, right?
Right. You've got to tell us, I guess, if we need a special meeting or not, so...
Can I get back to you on Monday?
Yeah. The next thing I have guys is colonial courts. I don't know if you have a resolution in your packet. If you don't, that's okay. I brought a nice copy, but I know that the plan comes out of the Plan Commission, the Redevelopment Commission passed a resolution at their meeting that they had last week. I'm told they did. And basically, their resolution needs to mirror the resolution that I prepared on behalf of the town, that their resolution accepts the transfer of the lots, 12 lots out of colonial estates. This resolution authorizes the transfer of those lots from the town to the developer. I know that I've worked a little bit with Mark and Paul, and there's an interested purchaser in a couple of those lots, and I think they have some things scheduled for the 30th to basically have a public hearing and then a meeting to hopefully get a purchase agreement put into place with her. So, this is the resolution that would transfer the real estate to the Redevelopment Commission. Then I also have a deed, and the resolution obviously authorizes the execution of the deed conveying the real estate to Redevelopment.
You type that down, Stan?
Mm-hmm. One finger tick. Hey, I don't want to get to him.
And you notice, it's only the vacant lots, it's not the roads and the streets, it's not the northwest corner parcel of, I think, a half an acre. It's only the buildable lots.
What we discussed.
Correct. And you also, please note also in that resolution that it does also discuss that when the lots are sold, half of the net proceeds come back to the town, so in essence, kind of reimburses the town for the expenditure in the first place.
Consider motion to pass resolution 2017 dash what?
Aye.
What do we want? Do we do a number on this number?
2028.
Yeah. Yes.
If I forget anything, we're waiting. Yes, that'll be good news.
Okay.
You want us to go ahead and give our department reports?
No. She's going to be back.
You're not jumping that far, I'm lying.
2017 dash aye. I move to pass resolution 2017 dash aye.
Second. The motion is second to pass resolution 2017 dash aye. Is there any other discussion? All papers, signify, I'm saying aye. Aye, aye. Oppose, same, sign. Motion carries three, zero. Four openings.
Could you please go and dust one folder and pull out an envelope for the park board opening. Over here, right.
Got a town bill.
We wouldn't pay that wire out.
Next to the park board.
As well, you're supposed to open it.
Thanks, it's for the town, guys. The park board is opening.
Mr. Member making service, my name is Jerry Becker, and I would like to be considered to serve on Argus Park Board. I served on the park board previously, had to resign due to conflicts with other groups. I have since given up responsibility to that organization. Thank you. Consider me for this position. His appointment is this one, do you know?
It is.
Well, here's the deal on this.
Please let me know that Jerry was interested in applying here for the park board, so I take a little look at chapter 17 of the town code. It says the President of the Town Board would appoint members of the park board. However, taking a look then, and basically the statutes that deal with length term, things of that nature, and any other requirements, I don't know when this statute is necessarily enacted, but it was probably after chapter 17 was put into force with the town code. But Indiana statute says that it's the town legislative body that does the appointment of park board members. Okay? So, that really means it's up to the council to make that appointment as opposed to the executive, Dustin. Another requirement is that you're not supposed to have more than two members of the same political party on the park board. However, there's also a statute that waives that requirement, or that the council can waive that requirement in that appointment, if you have to make the finding that there's no other interested parties, or that there's a need to fill the park board, and this is the person that's applying. So, in other words, you can waive that requirement, that we have more than two of the same political party, but that has to be a part of the motion and the approval of Mr. Becker if you're so inclined. I also, just this afternoon, you've seen some of these cheat sheets I have for like Plan Commission, Redevelopment Commission. I just got one put together for park board so that we don't have to go down this road again in another two years when we're trying to figure out if Jim Smith, or whoever it is, what the requirements would be. We'll have it on a handy little sheet.
And what would this term be for this young member?
Four years.
This one's four?
They're all four. They're all four-year terms. When this park board got reestablished, it looks like in 1988, yes. At that point, the terms were staggered. I honestly don't know if that's still being followed, I hope that it is, but that's kind of the intention, is that each of the, each of the four members would go off one year at a time, each year being a new member going off. If there's not somebody there to replace them by April 1, first, I think it's the first Monday in April, then that person stays on as the incumbent, because there's nobody else there to replace them. So, they can actually serve a continuous term and keep going over and over and over. But Jerry's initial term would be for a period of four years.
Is that a sufficient number for the school board?
No, it's not. It's an efficient two.
So, then we have another board, right?
Well, you said Phil Dean was the school board trustee appointment.
Right, and this says we can vote.
You can vote.
Because right now, he's our secretary, he's out of the vote.
He, that's an officer. But yes, it's fine, I don't see anything that prohibits that ex officio member from being an officer of that board as well.
So, we still have another park board opening?
No. I don't, right now, you have Ed, John, Joe Stone, Phil Dean?
Right.
Okay, and we're looking to add, add Jerry, that would be five.
You're right. Sorry.
Can you say John, Jill?
Yeah. Phil Dean is the school board trustee appointment, yes.
Well, as you see, they're knocking on the doors again. Let me spoil him.
Do they have to vote?
I just think by, yeah, by oral motion, to waive the requirement that they be not more than two of the same political party, and also move to appoint Jerry Becker to park board if you're so inclined, make a motion.
Make motion that we waive the political requirements of a member of the park board, if you're not, and also to appoint Jerry Becker as a member of the park board.
Second.
Motion and a second to appoint Jerry Becker by waiving, waive to enforce political requirements of the park board. Is there any other discussion? All papers, signify, I'm saying aye. Aye, aye. Oppose, same. Push fast, three, zero. Okay, we got full board now. So in other words, you can waive that requirement, that we have more than two of the same political party, but that has to be a part of the motion and approval of Mr. Becker if you're so inclined. I also, just this afternoon, you've seen some of these cheat sheets I have for like plan commission, redevelopment commission. I just got one put together for park board so that we don't have to go down this road again in another two years when we're trying to figure out if Jim Smith, or whoever it is, what the requirements would be. We'll have it on a handy little sheet.
And what would this term be for this young member?
Four years.
This one's four?
They're all four. They're all four-year terms. When this park board got reestablished, it looks like in 1988. Yes. At that point, the terms were staggered. I honestly don't know if that's still being followed, I hope that it is, but that's kind of the intention, is that each of the, each of the four members would go off one year at a time, each year being a new member going off. If there's not somebody there to replace them by April one, first, I think it's the first Monday in April, then that person stays on as the incumbent, because there's nobody else there to replace them. So they can actually serve a continuous term and keep going over and over and over. But Jerry's initial term would be for a period of four years. No, it's not. It's an efficient two.
So then we have another board.
You said Phil Dean was the school board trustee appointment.
Right, and this says we can vote.
You can vote. He, that's an officer. But yes, it's fine, I don't see anything that prohibits that ex officio member from being an officer of that board as well.
So we still have another park board opening?
No. I don't. Right now, you have Ed, John, Joe Stone, Phil Dean?
Right.
Okay, and we're looking at Ed.
Oh, I need Jerry.
At Jerry, that would be five.
You're right.
Can you say John, Jill?
Phil Dean is the school board trustee appointment, yes.
Well, as you see, they're knocking on the doors again. Let me spoil him.
I just think by, yeah, by oral motion, to waive the requirement that they be not more than two of the same political party, and also move to appoint Jerry Becker to park board if you're so inclined to make a motion.
Make motion that we waive the political requirements of a member of park board, if you're not, and also to appoint Jerry Becker as a member of the park board.
Second.
Motion and a second to appoint Jerry Becker. By waiving, waived to enforce political requirements of the park board, is there any other discussion? All papers, seconded by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Push the fast three zero. Okay, we got full board now. Hey, we're still have the Marshall County tourism. I think Carol ought to be jumping on that, but she just doesn't want to. Like I said, it's only about four, three minutes in the air, you're getting Christmas party clock. What can I say? Yeah, mess building. Unfortunately, I do not have that paperwork right now that I wanted to. I'm about halfway through it, and put it in better terms. Everything built loose at work, you know, happy as a family, and it just doesn't happen. I will have it by Monday, it will be finished by Monday night. Account plan match, I don't know if anybody's looked at that. Dustin's not here, Julie's not here, I think it's a, should be a five-member thing, not just the two or three of us to look at and bring it up. That's up to you guys. Table out there, and other old business. Anybody have anything? Jerry, did I say that?
Forgive you for your pronunciation. We're passing out Marshall County visitors guide, particular page that's in our files. You'll see these on the left-hand side. Mark here, he'll do the report, just to let you know that the... You can see the ad took a different approach to doing the ad this year, I think he's a little bit better, hopefully you could agree. A little less verbiage, a little bit more information in terms of, here in the town of Argus. So having said that, Mark, you might do the update, you'll need to take care of that.
I'll take care of it.
Okay, what?
M C E D C.
Okay, you can do that.
Pardon, guys, I haven't had enough. We can hand up some afterwards, if you don't mind.
Cause you can read it.
A couple of items. First item that you see there on the sixth of April, Commissioner Overmeyer and myself went down to go visit with Secretary of Commerce, June Schellinger, dear friend of ours, talked specifically about U S thirty-one, and to ensure that when Mr. Schellinger's talking within, that they are reminded that we have Argus capital investment, some major employers that operate off of seventeen, stable seventeen and, oh, seventeenth row, and stable ten. So that has led to several other meetings, I'll describe those a little bit later on, but, you know, relative to our M C E D C newsletter that was issued on the twenty-fifth. A lot of, a lot of the work that has culminated, we have done the last month and a half, have been associated with the manufacturing center, as opposed to Shell Building. Still have a little bit of sour taste in them, not with regards to that particular title. So, on fifteenth, you signed the resolution, twenty seventeen dash four, that approves the rest of the forward project. We then, on the twenty-sixth of April, we got a meeting with the NDOT new commissioner, against, whole host of NDOT folks, it was orchestrated and were put together by Senator Mandy Head, as well as Representative Jack Jordan here in Marshall County, I think we all know him pretty well. A lot of decision makers were there, sitting on the table, and basically to talk about U S thirty-one cadres, and probably in future, we need to be thinking past J turns, specifically because of the capital investment. Great meeting, I think we got what we're after. If you were at the meeting yesterday at M C E D C, I think Representative Jordan said that that was, we accomplished what we wanted to accomplish, so I, nothing's ever done until it's done, until the ink's dry, so we're going to be pushing. NDOT a little bit further to make sure that we have a better plan than J turns. You made some great memories to us, fair to say? Oh, I thought Jack wasn't here, fair to say?
Yes.
And now it's a matter of... Great meeting, I think we're there probably, if we're been over now, talk about, probably a little over now, and I gotta, I gotta say, this is the first time I've seen an NDOT group that was very eager to be very helpful, whether that was in Arizona, Montana, or North Dakota, so I don't know if it was because of Commissioner Overmeyer, or Senator Head, or Representative Jordan, or June Schellinger, so we've got a lot of people highs to make sure that we're heading in the right direction. And I'll remind you, we've said this before, every time you have these elected officials, or NDOT officials, or whoever in your community, you want to remind them that thirty-one, ten, and seventeen are very important for the future of this community. You can see the dates, a lot of meetings regarding the design of the buildings, and nickel survey work, and then a lot of lender meetings, I'm not going to go out publicly and say to the lenders that we are visiting with know that, be satisfied, but there are several of them out there, we want to get the best deal that we can when we have this opportunity. As I said earlier, to, regarding the status of the lease agreement, there are some things that we are expecting, I don't want to get out there right now, I'm trying to get the feedback from the banks, but suffice it to say, the golden rule applies, those with the gold make the rules, so the banks are pretty much a chalice for what they're going to expect, so we have to be flexible in that regard. But we are trying to make it work to make it win for everybody else. Argus, congratulations on the purchase of twelve lots of the colonial estates, and appears like our real estate developers over there slash real estate agents are hard at work, I don't know who's taking the focus to be up there, but could look pretty good. Competing supply, adopted and approved, congratulations, now probably the plan to work. We'll help you every chance we can. Starting development for the future, great meeting yesterday, still open to council. I think there was two from Argus, three from Argus yesterday. Everybody loved it, talked a little bit about the exciting news with the park, and the mailroom reason, all sorts of stuff, so. Yesterday, I think there was thirty-eight leaders from around the county assembled that wanted to watch for it. Invitation's still open. August the sixteenth is the next meeting?
Did I get that date right?
So, yeah, my memory is not always the way it should be, but sometimes I'm cheap. Internal communications, I gave a report, town meetings, leadership, economic development speaker. I was a part of leadership, congratulations to councilperson Lasamba, she was part of that leadership group, and she actually heard Project One, the world competition this year, so it's, it's a great platform whereby to talk about economic development in that group. Executive meeting, the lease for the main manufacturing center. And just on the twenty-fifth of May, we assembled a smaller group in kind of development for the future, where we talked about how we partner, specifically looking to leverage resources and look for commonality. This is the group that carried on the discussion with CD, the lot last year, but this year, I think, will probably be a much more engaging conversation about roads, rural development, that sort of stuff, solved by power coming together. So the twenty-fifth is the next meeting, we'll have that in color, we've had one here, we've had one in Bremen, so not color, and then we'll try to make everybody happy by going to the county. So Dustin's invited, I think Mark will be there too. You will not be, I cannot make that even. So it's not a meeting where everybody's invited, but we invite some key people there to talk about funding, sharing resources, I'm becoming the other key, a little bit more fiscalally responsible, which is the number one question of the day for Marshall County. So with that, I'll take any questions? I don't hear any, I'll give this to...
What'd you get in your third one?
And the last thing I will say, you know, I think Brian left, and I wanted to also say, the team was a value partner. They bring a lot of resources to the table, I'm hoping they can bring more resources, but, you know, his, his ability to bounce, I don't know, ideas, but planning and that sort of stuff is important for M C E D C's. Any questions? Anything I can ask?
Good. For me?
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you. New business, tax abatement. Conventions. Between you and your first in. We just got accepted again like we do every year, but they need the obligations.
Or is that what you're supposed to determine, yes?
If that is a state-regulated tax, so, and there, there's really no requirement, so that one's pretty much a good one. If you look at Indiana tool, for the one that ends this year, you'll see on the actual, in the middle bar here, it says actual employees, thirty-nine, and they, when they did the tax abatement, they promised forty, if you look down, this is their last year for this tax abatement, they've got thirty-nine employees, I don't see a problem with that one. And then the third one, if you look where it says, when they first started this, they had fifty employees, now they're down to thirty-nine. When they first asked for this abatement, they, they were putting in equipment, and they said with this equipment abatement, that they would add three more jobs from the fifty. So on this one, they are not in compliance, but it is up to you. Just because they're not in compliance this year, does not mean that they wouldn't be eligible next year, or if you wanted to just forego and just give it to them, you can do it either way. Number one.
So they actually want us to read it? It's not like they're hurting us. We want them to stay as long as they possibly can, even with whatever rumor mills going around, so I don't see any problem with keeping it, accepting it.
But it's done this year though anyhow?
No. I think the one is done this year. This one goes until... It was a ten-year tax abatement that was done in two thousand eleven, so it's twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, okay. Motion to go ahead and accept the compliance statements, right, tax abatement? Hold on. Second. No, I didn't ask for a motion, I was about to make a vote, and I know. I made the motion to accept the tax abatement score. We need to list them all individually, ATAMCO and EMTAL also. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to go ahead and honor the compliance statements with ATAMCO and Indiana National Power. Any additions? Discussion? All papers, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries three zero. Other new business?
I have another thing.
No. You're right, if you're in a Quality Setters or whatever.
Yeah.
Apparently, there was a plan commission meeting last night, was it?
Yes.
Is that Jim?
No, I'm back here.
Okay. You may know where we're at this night, but this, what's going on here, folks, and I think, I know George, you're aware of it, but Parson Real Estate used to be the old Wicks Lumber Yard, if you will, it's four parcels, I believe, in the process of being sold, it was owned by a corporation called Quality Setters Inc. Back in two thousand seven, they requested a rezoning of that property, and that rezoning was granted, but it was conditioned on written commitments that Quality Setters signed and were also recorded. Part of those written commitments indicated that if they ever sold it, the plan commission had to approve the continued use of that property as it existed, or could, you know, impose any other kind of conditions upon that to stay within that light industrial zoning. Last night, there was the meeting with the plan commission, and Coal Alliance is the proposed purchaser, they are agreeing to continue with these written commitments, and I believe that you've got a copy of that in front of you there, but it talks about downlighting, screening vegetation, fence surrounding a property, always be prepared and maintained so that it's secure, and it also is requiring, yeah, any lease or sale of this real estate to another party down the road at some point in the future, would again impose upon a new purchaser to come back to the plan commission to see what the idea is for the use out there, and see about any other written commitments. Coal Alliance was obviously willing to abide by these written commitments, and they signed that document that you have in front of you. Okay, I see that everybody's got a copy in front of them, so you can read that. That's what I know of that arrangement, Jim, anything more to it?
No, we had a, we had a public hearing before that, there was lots of discussion, there were some concerns from surrounding neighbors, they were able to be heard, there were three people from the proposed buyers here, I think they answered the majority of the questions. The plan commission then talked amongst themselves, it is a permitted use for what they want to use it for, and we voted to unanimously approve the use of that property with those contingencies in place. Has a real brief summary.
So it's up to, it's up to the council now to basically approve the written commitments, or approve the recommendations here in the plan commission regarding these written commands, to maintain that zoning and to allow them to use the property in that fashion.
She went, she went out and bought herself another coat that is neon, but it's a lightweight sweatshirt coat, and she wants to know if she can get reimbursed. I don't know what your feelings are on this. I told them I had to bring them.
She bought that without, she never asked, she just went and done it?
I was gonna say, she didn't get authorization from her.
She could at least come and ask.
She asked me after she'd bought it. Now, I, I thought they had a clothing allowance. I'm gonna check with the clerk, I don't, but I guess.
I don't know what clothing allowance is just.
They're, they're just provided.
They're just issued certain things, yeah.
Yeah, she, she never asked, she just went and bought it. So that's about.
I told her I didn't have the authority, and it was up to you guys, so.
How much is it?
Thirty-two ninety-nine with tax, that's thirty-five thirty.
She only got word.
I don't think that we.
I mean, if you wanted to, I wouldn't make a habit of it. I suppose that she's part of the police department.
But are you going to do it for the other one?
Take out of our tree, or law enforcement firm for equipment, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, it's only thirty-two bucks, but if that's okay to do.
Are you gonna buy?
I suppose if she wanted one, I would have to.
Do they have to come to you?
But yeah, well.
I guess the problem is the po, I mean, the policy before, I thought they went, because we both.
Yeah, she never did.
And maybe that wasn't clear, I don't know, it's, 'cause I remember going through this with Rod, with Suzie, so it's probably, it's been done, I know, forever, but normally at the police department, normally they deal with them. You're okay with it?
If we can go with that, I'll take care of it from here on out.
I just say, anything after this, we'll have to go through you?
Yes.
But are we gonna offer one to Ruth?
If she wants, I don't.
So to him. He's the charge. Anything has to be authorized prior to buying, so he's the supervisor.
I thought I understood, but.
The police officer's the supervisor, and he say he doesn't have any problem with it, then he's authorized.
The problem in the past is then they, that can be no right to the clerk's office, am I right? When they want something.
Yes.
She's been coming to the clerk's office and, and telling us what day she wants off and stuff like that. We've had this discussion, so I've been trying to.
She's the girl who should be taken care of.
Okay. So if you're authorizing it, then that's fine. What? She's the supervisor. Part of the responsibility of leadership.
Everybody's a girl.
I think you should put her in your gym. Yeah, put her in your gym.
How do we all care for that? As a matter of fact, I think I have a motion.
Negative, go try it.
Any other new, our whole business, ordinary business, we'll write there. If not, we're gonna move to department heads. P.D., well, you should have our report, and just a few things, um, extra here. I, I gave you guys the code before the report, just keep in mind that, that changes all the time, so it's not always, I mean, there's always more, you know. Um, that being said, I think if you look, most of the stuff has been pretty, been going pretty good. Um, the other thing is that we're receiving a note of five, that we're getting five thousand one hundred and one dollars for the law enforcement fund, city and town court costs. So that's what we also use to pay for the truck, or part of, or all of the truck. Um, and the last thing I had was, um, a few days ago, or that was the last week, I moved to track my days, there's a break-ins of the cars, several of them, I mean, several of them. Um, just real quick, Officer Davis was, uh, given information that someone had seen these people going through a car, so he made a traffic stop on the suspect vehicle, um, couldn't link anything at the time with any break-ins, or, I don't get that, any, any stolen items. Um, however, he did make an arrest on the driver for, for drugs. Then later information came in, and he, um, applied, got a search warrant, got some stolen items, so it's still in the process, but hopefully we get a rest warrant, or free arrest warrant for that. That being said, all the, the, I mean, numerous vehicles that we reported, all were unlocked. That would seem to be the MO was going through all unlocked vehicles. Nobody reported anything that was broken, um, or damaged the vehicles that physically gained entry. So if anybody really, if the community wants to help us, maybe start security to property, would be a big help, uh, in the garage, because this has been done before, it was the same MO again, where we've had in the ninety, and we surely remember, and it's, it's people that are out of town that come in here, it's like their job, go town to town, and that's how they make their living, I guess. So, on a good note, no?
It's pretty much solved. It's all handled. Rachel?
I have a question on code enforcement.
Yes.
When there are homes, they are being maintained, but they are not lived in. Isn't there something about homes that are not been lived in?
As far as?
Just like an abandoned home?
If they're abandoned, Suzanne, I think yes, then that does put them under that per U of the statutes of deal of public nuisance.
Okay, if they're not lived in?
If they're abandoned, then that's per.
That's the.
There you go.
That's the catch.
Are you talking about some city property?
Well, there's one behind us. There's a lot of stuff.
Those are owned by financial companies, I believe, though, correct?
No.
Are we all the same one?
It's directly behind us, it's owned by a family.
I don't know what you have to tell us one is.
The next one.
Yeah, that's what I thought. What, the stuff I?
Yeah, more than one.
I'm not sure, I just swore I was sending stuff to a financial company on that one. I may be wrong. Next, Suzanne, I think that really falls into the unsafe building statutes. We have an ordinance, our ordinance adopts the state statutes, and I think that's where you'll find a reference to abandoned structure. Now, I can't tell you whether abandoned means six months, twelve months, I'd have to look into that.
Well, these people have never lived there.
That would fall out, that would be my, well, I'm code enforcement. Doesn't matter whether the owners live there, it matters whether anybody lives there, I think.
No, cats.
So we have one.
Cats open in the windows.
Cats living there.
Well, the windows are open to the basement. We walked around it today, windows are open, and in the past, I called the police department one time, because cats were up in the attic, looking out the attic.
So the health department, they can get online and can file a complaint, sometimes they check it out, sometimes they don't.
That would be an avenue to.
Oh, there you go.
The health department. Especially because the windows are open. Am I wrong seeing, Barry, because there isn't even a code that I would be able to prove. For that unsafe building ordinance.
It's a cat house.
There is an ordinance that they took off. And that's really something I think the town would probably have to. The council would tackle that.
You might have found that avenue. Here's a house on corner of Grove.
My Hope? You mean My Hope?
Where's this walnut? From the south side, it's, I think the address is walnut, but it's on the, it's on the east side of Grove Street.
Yeah, well, that's, we've still, that one numerous times already.
Well, yeah, well, there's people.
Okay. We'll get a list for it. Derek. Well, I'm, then that's something the council would tackle, and something like that. If it's, if it's an action of the unsafe building ordinance, then yeah, if it's something the council's, council's gotta issue an order, property owner, and what kind of remediation we're looking for, and it, and that's really, I'm interested now to see, what do you do in terms of an order with an abandoned property?
New truck. Or you can have someone to move in, and it, and the.
It's not safe.
Well, I mean, it just, yeah, so many years it can. You're no help now. You're no help on that one. Where's your new truck?
Not my truck, it's kind of ours.
It's not my truck now, is it?
It's that, um, should be done this, I mean, we're supposed to be done this weekend, but now it's saying, this is coming, because I didn't install the spotlight and, you know, a few other things, but yeah, it's kind of a long.
Any other questions for Corey? Until this, Jim?
Unfortunately, being packed there, um, couple of highlights, we did have interruption of service, um, several days ago, ended up being fed from Duke, and they got storms down south, and took out their feed, so while they were switching, that's why the lights went on and off about twenty times before they finally got it straightened out. It was not, not our equipment, it was the people we were fed from. Uh, update on the water reservoir, Water Creekwood Plant, um, Control Dynamics was here late last week. Um, the plants are talking to one another, as a matter of fact, we've been filling and emptying the water reservoir, and filling our tower here in town, it's working well. Um, the Control Dynamics will be here, uh, first of next week, and we're gonna have a water outage for about two days, so we gotta make sure everything is full, as they rip, rip out wire at our main treatment facility, rewire it, and get everything back up, but then, everybody I've talked to says this is state of our, state of the art stuff, so it will help us market our town, um, as far as our water consumption. We've basically doubled our capacity for potable water. Um, fire pump is in, running, and, um, ITAMCO is very happy, um, helped with their insurance rates, so got Gary on my keister for a while. So that's, that's progressing. We had an issue over here behind, um, North Michigan Street, uh, property owner, for whatever known reason, decided to dig up their, um, sewer without being located, and now they missed a gas line and are very electric for the bank. You know, God protects drunks and idiots, so, um, anyway, they cut the sewer line, it was left open, um, we contacted health department, uh, letters were written, a cease and desist was issued on the work, and the property owner got a nasty gram from Orange County Department of Health, it is, they since got a contractor in, it is fixed, so, and they were told that if we had to incur any cost for cleaning the sewer, we had rain and all that, if we had to incur any cost, they would get a bill, so that's taken care of. Um, that's pretty much it for right now. We do have an executive session scheduled for Monday night, um, at six-thirty for personnel issue. I'd like to have meeting the council members there if we can get.
Quick answer, or quick answer, quick question on this, um, control system.
Yes.
We, this will be all, I mean, smartphone accessible.
Yes.
We pay stipends for the phones.
Yeah.
Correct. Well, we should pay for that on that phone, if the town?
The town is paying for the software, um, and for that service to go to, to people?
To.
And the rest of it is main, is from the plant itself, is where it'll be monitored.
But I mean, work, work that to take care of their phone, they're not have to do it on their own?
Right.
Okay. Right. Just wanted to make sure, since we give them a stipend and.
Right.
This is the bill on top of that, that we're gonna be taking care of.
And one other quick thing, I met with, uh, Jackson Demolition today on the old library. Um, he just came in to look things over and try to get a date mailed down. He's buried, and I told him with the fair and everything, we didn't want that going on during the fair, um, he says, what about August first? Um, I said that works best for us, because I know there's some people that still want to get, like Scott Stain, those ones to get some stuff out of the building for homeless vets and, uh, repurposing some stuff there, and it gives us more time to find homes for things. We have all of our utilities except for one disconnected from the building, um, he's thinking he must be in and out in a week to a week and a half, because he's got roadwork that he's been on, that needs to get done, and if he doesn't get, get there on time, he won't get it, so, um, that's where we left it. So it'll probably be the first of August before you see anything happening there. He's wanting to put a six-foot fence around the exterior of the building during demolition. We've contacted CenturyLink and MediaCom, they are looking at relocating some of the low-hanging wires on the backside of the EMS building, um, and taking those directly over, which he'll be way below all that, so it's, we're coordinating the dance and trying to make everything work, but that's the latest update on that. The only other thing I, I have is, I don't know what you want me to do about a flagpole for Memorial Park. I don't know if the council has talked to the park board and got anything arranged, I don't know who is supposed to handle that.
Well, thank you, remind me, for charm of memory, but when we took the old one down, we were gonna put it back up. After it was taken down, it was pretty much to the point where it wasn't safely put back in.
It's, it's not able to.
The plaque, the plaque was taken off, it's been refurbished, it's ready to keep on whatever we decided to put up on.
Okay.
So now, I guess, it's between the park board and us to decide that that water fountain has been inoperable for a long time.
Yeah.
Does the park board want to put in a, in a new water fountain at, I don't know, they're pretty salty as far as Cross Street, um, or eliminate the water fountain uptown and just put the flagpole right there? I, I mean, we need the park board's input, it's their baby, but I don't.
and refurbishing some stuff there, and it gives us more time to find homes for things. We have all of our utilities except for one disconnected from the building. He's thinking he wants to be in and out in a week to a week and a half, because he's got roadwork that he's been on that needs to get done, and if he doesn't get there on time, he won't get it, so that's where we left it. So it'll probably be the first of August before you see anything happening there. He's wanting to put a six-foot fence around the exterior of the building during demolition. We've contacted CenturyLink and MediaCom, they are looking at relocating some of the low-hanging wires on the backside of the EMS building and taking those directly over, which still be way below all that. So it's, we're coordinating the dance and trying to make everything work, but that's a latest update on that. The only other thing I have is, I don't know what you want me to do about a flag pole for Memorial Park. I don't know if the council has talked to the park board and got anything arranged, I don't know who is supposed to handle that.
Well, thank you, remind me, for charm of memory, when we took the old one down, we were gonna put it back up. After it was taken down, it was pretty much to the point where it wasn't safety putbacked.
It's not able to...
The plaque was taken off, it's been refurbished, it's ready to put on whatever we decided to put it up on. So now, I guess it's between the park board to decide that that water fountain has been inoperable for a long time. Does the park board want to put in any water fountain at, I don't know, it's pretty salty as far as frost free? Or eliminate the water fountain uptown and just put the flag pole right there? I mean, we need the park board's input, it's their baby, but I...
I just didn't want you to think that it was my thing to handle it.
We should be buying the flag pole, since we're the ones that pretty much went in with them and took that one down before it fell down, so...
I just didn't want to be blamed that nothing gets done.
No, I, I just, you know, in the back of my mind, I'm looking at the counter going, holy crap, Memorial Day's two weeks, and I don't know if he can get a hole dug in a flag pole, I mean, I'm sure he could, but if he pushed it, but I don't, I don't want him just throwing it up here and saying, oh, now we're gonna move water down and get rid of that one.
Park board meets tomorrow evening.
Okay, I won't be here, I know that, I'll be at the...
There's this question I had, so... I won't worry about it.
There you go, you can bring it up too. Please? Yeah, because I just saw that, yeah, like you said, looking, this year's just coming so quick, it's like, uh-oh. Anything else for Jim, Avon?
Okay, so for the park board?
Well, it's, quote, it's really their decision, but we, I think the town should pay for the pole, and then they can go from there with it. That's just my thoughts, I'm with it. What do you think?
Yeah, we'd pay for the pole, I'm assuming, but the water fountain...
How many years without it? I don't know. I mean, they are nice, but... You're gonna say that was not that they look nice, but they're out here. It'd be different if it was out there where it was more monitored, but this one up here, I don't fully, but there, again, that's their call. I don't think they got the money to do it anyway. So if you, if they decide to eliminate that water fountain, there's your stop, there's your light pole.
Didn't you say that there's a light that shines right there, too?
There is.
Because you'd have to move electric and all that if you...
The light actually shines, it pretty much lights up the new monument, the vest, right now.
Yeah, because that's where the flag was.
Yeah, but that's, that's an easy, isn't it?
There was three lights mounted there, they were supposed to point at each, each feature of the Memorial Park, and they got broken and...
But that's an easy fix to replace.
Yeah, you could always do like you did at the cemetery, put a solar light there, too. I mean, so it's not prohibited, you can put it wherever you want, but, or we could run electric, too, it's not, not big deal.
So, I mean, I think it's, in their court, we're just thinking, buy a decent pole with a big yardarm. Take this one down real quick. Take this one down real quick.
Okay, fire departments, you got the report, it looks like, here. On that note, as liaison, I want to thank the community for showing up at the fire department. Fish fry.
It was a...
Success like normal, we had a lot of people just sitting around and talking and enjoying the evening. I mean, it seemed to me like there was a hundred more people in there, but it was just the people stayed and talked, you know, they just, they had a good time. We gave out a bunch of things to the kids this year. Lisa's husband Dave is in charge of our public awareness, and he had a bunch of coloring books and hats and bracelets and all that, and that was passed out to the kids, and I just thought that was neat, so thank them for that. EMS, we don't have a report, which he does like quarterly, so... Doesn't even do that now, candy to them? Or we just go get them because of the... Well, I see they run the reports, but...
Nothing yet, we don't have...
Now, we'll go to claims. Travis, anybody set the park head reports?
Make a motion to accept the park head reports?
Second.
Motion is second to accept the park head reports, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
The total docket for May seventeenth, not the third, is a hundred and fifty-seven thousand one hundred and five dollars and forty cents. The top five claims are as follows. Number one is Marshall County title for sixty thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars, that would be for Colonial Estates. Then number two, payroll number nine of thirty-four thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-two cents. Number three is Town of Argus, monthly sewer transfer would be seven thousand eight hundred dollars. Number four is Royce Equipment Limited, which is seven thousand five hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-three cents. And number five is the Federal Reserve of seven thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty-seven cents. The top five claims total one hundred and seventeen thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars and two cents, and are seventy-five percent of the total docket.
I move to accept claims five seventeen through five eighty-five.
Motion, second, to accept claims five seventeen through five eighty-five. Any discussion, questions? Not all in favor, say a five, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. No? Motion carries, three, two. Anything else?
Yes.
Go ahead.
At the fairgrounds, I believe it's this weekend, is barrel racing. It's a big event, there's a thousand registrations, which they say probably over three hundred people just registered to participate, and these people come from all over the country. So it's gonna be a big deal. So we have a lot of people coming in, and as a community, I think it would be great if we could learn how maybe we could support this, because they're gonna be doing this a second time, possibly a third time this year. So I don't know, as a community, there's some ideas, but let's try and figure it out and be supportive.
Who's on bigger than that plan?
Pardon?
Are they getting any information out to the media to make sure they're discovered?
I don't know.
I'm not fully in charge of that. Who's running the program?
I don't even know who's running the program.
Who runs the trailer place?
Steve Pig.
Yeah.
Can you give me your name and number? He runs the circular, what is that? I can't, he doesn't live there.
Circle P Trailer, yeah.
I can't even remember, but, yeah, he used to be a Breman cop. Good opportunity to meet him.
Here's what I found on the web for you.
Okay.
Here's what I found on the web for Breman cop, and I don't give you anything. Never get to talk to you in the meeting.
Anything else? Sure gonna think of something when we walk out the door, but I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, Zee.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you, everybody.